I'd like to call this seating of the Ellsworth planning board to order, May second, twenty eighteen, seven P M. With us this evening, please introduce ourselves.
Mike Howie.
John Delia.
John Fink.
Darryl Wilson.
Rodal Sard.
Okay. The first item of difference after our call to order is the adoption of the minutes from March seventh is the motion regarding the minutes.
I move to accept the minutes from March seventh, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any additions or corrections? There are none, all in favor, please? Thank you. The next item is the, is an amendment to improve major use site development and major subdivision. Titled Atlantic Storage for Atlantic Landscape Corporation. The proposed amendment would increase the number of residential duplexes from four to five, and the total number of units from eight to ten, by converting a building previously approved uses as an office to a two-family home. The project is located at one twenty-four Bango Road on two parcels, totaling ten point zero five acres. Tax map fifty lot sixty-eight and tax map forty-one lot seventy-five in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury. Our application tonight, as you explained, is to convert the existing structure to a two-family duplex. We're gonna add four spaces of parking on the access road. We're probably gonna address the building Lehman Way, which we've applied to the city for the road name, and they've accepted. So the primary entrance will be through the storage units entrance to access the building to those six or seven parking spots we previously designated to go with the office, which now just go with the residences and...
And there's no external work on the, on the structure?
No external work on the structure, no, be added city water and city sewer to this building, where now it's private well and private septic system.
So, in other words, there's no need for any stormwater adjustments?
No.
Questions on the board?
That was a single family with an office last, before, right? Was it a single family, was it, before?
I don't believe there's any residents in there.
No, was it a residence? Just an office.
Just an office and retail.
So the question I have about the, like, the two sort of uses on the same lot, you have the stored buildings and they'll be administered from some other place off-site? There'll be some place you can go to rent those or something?
I don't know that they've worked out that logistic yet.
Okay, but you removed that option by converting this office building.
Yes.
The, the family dwelling is, where are the, like, entrances and exits to that building? Do they face that storage area?
One, there's one primary entrance on the, you know, south side looking at the storage buildings, and one existing primary entrance door on the north side looking at the access road to the, of the, four of the duplexes on Huckleberry Way.
So the, if you were to walk out one of those doors then, for the, from the dwelling, you would walk down to those parking spots labeled one through seven?
Yes.
And there's no attempt to... I guess the thought that was going through my head was, okay, I'm, I'm a renter. I live in that, in that dwelling, and oh, look, there's, I could get a storage unit right over there and keep all my stuff. I could walk over there and, and, you know, get things, and I guess people could from the other units. You know, the storage is like that close.
Uh huh.
But then a user of the storage unit drives in and, look, there's an apartment building that you could walk right up to their front door. But the, so describe the, the parking, then, the one through seven, that is intended as like extra parking for the storage people to use?
No, there's no intended storage for the parking. The self-storage people just park in front of their locker and load and unload and leave.
Right, so they don't really need any, so there's no parking required?
Designated parking spaces, no, those spaces were designated for the office on the previous site plan, based on the square footage of the office building.
Okay. It, it, it's really kinda hard to imagine because the uses are different on the same property?
Uh huh.
And if they were on separate properties, we, there would be some separation, some buffer, or some disparate kind of uses there. So I guess the question for the, for the board, I, I don't know if this is a concern for anybody, that you would walk out of the family dwelling and walk right into the storage area, and people using the storage area would have, like, access to that dwelling sort of in the same way they could just walk to that person's front door.
Why would they do that?
I don't know, I mean, if, are there kids out playing in the yard with the... I don't know. It was just, um, something that popped into my head when you said, okay, we're gonna turn this into a dwelling unit, when it was really intended, you know, to be an office that was accessed from the storage area. Okay, I, I just wanted to get that out in the open and ask some questions about that. So the plans are to just, um, that, that entrance faces the parking, parking could be used by the residents?
Uh huh.
I mean, I guess a potential tenant who would understand that would see what the building is like, the layout's like. If he doesn't like the idea of a lot of people driving through his parking area, then I guess they find someplace else to rent.
Is the, okay, yeah, I, I agree with that. So the two-family dwelling is, um, it's gonna be like split vertically, split, is it a two, is it a two-story?
It's two-story, yeah. Probably put a demising wall down the middle and have one family use one side and the other family use the other side.
Okay. I can't think of any condition that I would impose on internal circulation or anything like that, so I, I guess that's all I have.
So Steve, did you say parking spaces twenty-two to twenty-five are also for the two-family dwelling?
Yeah, we added those four spaces, 'cause there is an entrance on outside the building. There's, there, there already was a little parking area for employees on that backside of the office, of which we've eliminated that entrance, but we have the, the new entrance and the new road, we can put some spaces there.
Certainly would be an interesting tax bill, all the different uses on there, I don't know. But, just comment.
So you mentioned that you would apply for a, a road name for the, um, road that goes to the one through seven parking?
Yes, yep, which we've already received approval for.
Just curious, would the two-family dwelling be, address be on Huckleberry Way or?
No, it's gonna be Lehman, Lehman Way.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, anyone may comment on this matter. You have to before doing so, you'd be recognized by the chair and then go to the lectern and state your name and tell us what you want us to say. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing, no one, I shall close the public hearing. What would the board like to do?
Does the city have any other concerns about what's being proposed for the change?
No, there's no T R T, we don't know what's to do.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the amendment to this approved major use site development and major subdivision titled Atlantic Storage, this proposed amendment changed the number of residential duplexes from four to five. We, we find that this, that meets all the standards and criteria, that we have to review just for this change, the rest of the project's been approved already. Um, there are no waivers. So it meets the criteria of site development and major subdivision, and that we approve this project.
Is there a second, please?
No, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please? Now, Steve, you're welcome to stay for the round.
I just left. A little while? Because I do support the city's initiatives, so...
Do you wanna hand us the linears?
Are those ready for signature?
We'll sign those tonight, yeah.
The next item business, proposed amendments to the ultimate code of ordinances, chapter fifty-six, unified development ordinance. The proposed amendments protect to the citing facilities posing risks to drinking water, lighting standards, medical marijuana caregivers, and allowable home occupations and zoning districts. This will consist of discussion of proposed amendments to article three, article eight, article fourteen, public hearing, recommendations to city council. Is someone prepared to talk to us?
So, it's, it's a bit confusing, there's a lot to follow, so I'm gonna try to, basically, I'm gonna, you're gonna be the trial, the trial, if we go to the council. What, they didn't pay, I didn't wanna use that, I don't know if it was, um, okay or not.
So if we looked sufficiently confused, you have to rethink everything.
I know. So we're gonna talk first of all about medical marijuana, uh, primary caregiver operations. So what's happening right now is on the books, there is a moratorium that addresses, uh, primary caregivers. I'm going to avoid saying marijuana, because it's not my forte, so I'm just gonna call them primary caregivers. Um, so the moratorium that's in effect right now, um, basically, uh, addresses two things. It says that primary caregivers cannot operate outside the primary residence. So basically, it prohibits them from, uh, operating as a standalone businesses such as we have right now on Main Street. And the idea of the moratorium was that what happened is that, and John, you can remember a lot of this information, is that a while back, medical marijuana passed, okay? And under the medical marijuana, there was a statute and there was a, um, uh, what do we call them, rules that were done. And under those rules, uh, there were two things that came out. Just, people wanna know this, I'm gonna explain it. There was, um, um, a section on dispensaries, and the section on dispensary said there was gonna be one, there shall be one dispensary for Washington Handcuff, which is in Ellsworth. Okay, so that's one thing on the medical marijuana. The medical marijuana also addressed, at that time, it addressed, uh, primary caregivers. And it preempted municipalities, or it was seen as we were being preempted, as lawyers all over the state of Maine gave opinions that said that you were, as a municipality, unable to be more stringent, to basically not allow them to operate in municipalities. So municipalities basically allowed primary caregivers without mostly any restrictions. Uh, so we did that. Since then, there has been other findings. So the medical marijuana passed, then there is a, um, a fair referendum question that was just up to the voters recently on what we call recreational marijuana. So we had the medical marijuana is one block, then we had a referendum question on recreational marijuana. And what happened after that vote took place is that we saw all over the state of Maine is we saw a proliferation of caregivers coming out of the homes and going into standalone businesses, basically setting themselves up for, um, having a foot in the door when the recreational marijuana was gonna be open for all. So when we, and, and, and as the referendum, uh, question, um, went through, we were receiving a lot of calls and questions about, you know, when, you know, what could they do? We had, we're getting calls from people wanting to operate here from all over the United States. So after we had someone that availed themselves of a, if you wanna call it a loophole or whatever, and put themselves on Main Street, um, that person did not do anything wrong as far as we know, but definitely it was a bit of a wake-up call. So what we did is we passed a moratorium on primary caregivers operating outside the primary residence.
Who's, who's we, the city of Ellsworth?
Yeah.
May I ask you to just define primary caregiver as opposed to dispensary on the record?
Is dispensary, um, is an operation that has an unlimited number of patients, as long as they have cards? A primary caregiver is a compassionate act toward a certain number of patients, I can't, I'm, five or six? Five? And that are restricted to have X amount of plants in different stages, um, and are not allowed to, uh, grow as, uh, what's the word, there when there are many people together?
Collective. Collective consortium?
So that's really the, so it was really, and, and, primary caregivers have been in the state of Maine way before this whole thing started. It was a compassionate act towards people that had medical needs that really could do better with that. So anyways, long story. So right now, we have a moratorium that's gonna expire in a month or two. And what we've decided to do, now, so the state of Maine has, is still working, you know, we know what happened today. Uh, there was a veto by, I understand, or recently by the governor, and that was, um, overridden by the legislature. But all this being said, it's still not clear of how this whole recreational thing is going to unfold. In the meantime, uh, as we wanna take a step back and just look at what's going on, we have decided, we passed the moratorium, and now we're gonna repeal the moratorium, and what we, we wanna do is pass permanent language that basically mirrors the moratorium into the land use ordinance. So what it does is two things. In article three, okay? There is a table of land uses, page, uh, eight, okay? And you're gonna see that it says primary caregivers, and it says no across all zone. And why it says no is that if a primary caregiver operating outside the home is prohibited in all zone, okay? So that's consistent with what we are, we have done, what the moratorium does, and what we want to continue doing until we get our bearings, okay? In article eight, accompanying this language in article, uh, three, in article eight, under the home occupation section, which starts, um, on page twenty, basically, again, on page twenty, it says that it reinforces that medical marijuana outside, probably, excuse me, primary caregiver is, cannot operate outside the primary residence, and it also explains that primary caregiver can operate in the primary residence as a home occupation. Then we continue under home occupation, and it addresses it further. It adds, uh, information consistent with what I said in the table. It also adds a section that holds all home occupation, not just primary caregiver, but all home occupation. Um, it, 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 it holds them to have to comply with article five, which is the fire protection and prevention, four, sorry, thank you, it's written in right there, um, which also, uh, refers to the NFPA one. And then under eight, eighteen point ten, unsafe home occupation, uh, it, um, turns anything that would be seen unsafe, it was a primary caregiver, it turns it back to law enforcement, not the court enforcement officer, because the court enforcement officer, for several reasons, cannot handle this. So that's what we're doing for primary caregivers. Yeah.
You got anything as far as if it's, they're renting?
Excuse me?
If they, if the primary care is renting his house from somebody?
That would be, uh, something between the landlord and the lease, it's getting, we don't regulate that. We're not addressing that here.
You're not addressing it at all?
Just like in the, the home occupation, you could operate a home occupation in a dwelling you're leasing.
Yes.
If the, um, landlord did not want you to, uh, wholly pet grooming business, then he should have had this in the lease before you guys signed. So it's a bit the same thing in this case.
You don't mention anything about?
None at this time, no.
We, we require documentation if we know that they're renting or not, ability, to make sure the landlord's aware of it, so, or any, any...
I believe the state law, state law requires that if it's a tenant landlord, they have to have permission from the landlord.
Now, they also, the primary care needs the license?
Correct.
Yes.
And can, can he service anybody or just certain people?
So we're not getting into this, this is so, this is really important, 'cause we don't...
I know, I know.
I wouldn't want caregivers to, to, to think that we are against them, we're not against them.
Oh, I understand that.
What we're trying to do is we're trying to set a fair platform to continue making decision regarding marijuana in the future. And what we're saying is that a caregiver for compassionate reason in the dwelling is okay as a home occupation, as it's always been. If and when this whole recreational medical gets all mixed in, then the people of Ellsworth and the council, you know, through a, uh, public participation process, will have to make decision if and where these things are allowed.
Now, the other thing is, like liquor stores, you can't have them within a school, right?
Correct.
Are you gonna have something there?
I, yes, I think there's gonna be something in there, I think there may be something in there in state law already, but I can't answer a question about the future. I can only answer a question about primary caregivers, medical marijuana, primary caregivers as it stands today.
So the, the primary caregiver has to provide the names of his clients to the state?
Okay. But I'm just saying, like, liquors, you know, look, you can't have a liquor license unless you, if you're so close to a school, that's...
I think we will do this very respectfully.
Yeah.
If, if and when the city decides to, if it decides to allow it, where and when it decides to allow it, I think that there's a lot of things that would need to be done, uh, in step and respectfully to make sure that, um, people feel that their property rights have not been taken away from them, and people feel comfortable as a whole.
Well, I understand that.
Just describe to me, you said there was a moratorium in the city of Ellsworth, but there's a person that became a primary caregiver outside of their home already?
So I don't wanna focus too much, but the situation is, there's a primary caregiver that instead of operating as a home occupation in the home, has moved in a standalone, uh, commercial, um, location on Main Street.
So the zoning change affects that person how?
I can't answer that question, that person right now has the right to continue operating.
Okay.
And this doesn't...
Because that occurred before the moratorium. And it wasn't in any way...
Oh, it did?
It wasn't in a, anyway, unprepared.
It precipitated the moratorium?
Correctly, yes.
How does this zoning change affect current home occupations? Does it at all?
There's no, there's, it's an amendment to the ordinance, so there's no zone change, so I do not. The only thing that, uh, it's, home occupation, it does change, is compliance. It's written explicit compliance with chapter five.
Does that require current home occupations to upgrade the, uh, to meet the N F P A?
I'm going to let the people in the know respond to that question.
That's your one, it's Mike.
That's your...
What was the question? Well, if you have a home occupation but are not in compliance with NFPA right now, will you be required to be in compliance?
Don't, I, I, I do not believe that we would have the authority in a single-family residence to do that. It would be in a commercial setting. Basically, the intent of NFPA one that was adopted by, um, or in the fire prevention ordinance deals with commercial growing, commercial processing, and commercial extraction processes, um, in a commercial setting, not in a single-family residence or a one- or two-family residence.
So...
So, to, to bring about those requirements, um, first of all, I can tell you, would be cost prohibitive for an individual, because it becomes very expensive. Um, secondly, you know, I do not believe we have the authority to go into a home and tell them what they can and cannot do. Now, if it was an apartment, it'd be a different story, because now we're looking at, you know, we're looking at a commercial building.
Under his definition, it's a commercial building, under other ordinances, an apartment is not a commercial building, just to make sure that's...
So you have, so, Michelle, so you have an application for home occupation for a primary caregiver? And the ordinance as amended will require them to meet the NFPA one? Yes, no?
That, that's the intent, as it's written right now, right?
So in effect, so in effect, you were saying to the, that home occupation person that you have to go through extraordinary costs to meet the standards?
In effect, so...
In effect of, effectively eliminating home occupations that don't, that are new?
In a multi-unit building, where other people may be at risk if fire was to take...
Does it, does the ordinance change specify multi-dwelling units?
His ordinance does.
No, the ordinance that we're, that we're amending.
The ordinance that we're amending simply refers that they have to comply with chapter four, depending on the uses, depending on how it applies and what situation it applies, uh, it doesn't apply in all situation. They're supposed to comply with NFPA four regardless, that if this is here or not, is that correct?
They, they are required...
I mean, if someone, if a project is, um, is, um, comes under your ordinance, regardless if you write this here or not, they're supposed to comply with NFPA four, correct? 'Cause you've adopted NFPA four through chapter four.
In, in chapter four, the fire prevention ordinance, in, in, in article three, um, it describes the idea of medical, of growing marijuana, or the processing of marijuana, or the extraction process. Um, and it's specifically dealing with commercial operations. Now, it's difficult to, for me to say, if a person comes in, and, and, or if a person starts to do that in their own home, um, I don't know if they're doing it until something happens. Um, and then if something does happen, if, if there's a fire, or if there's, there's an urgency, and that is the result, uh, or the result is from that operation, then we would know that. Can we enforce that? I don't believe so. I don't believe in a single-family dwelling that that is, is the intent of, of that ordinance or of NFPA one. It was strictly for commercial growing, commercial operations.
So is home occupation always take place in a single-family dwelling?
No.
No, it does not.
The, but the question that John asked, if I understand correctly, is, does this chapter four applies to all home occupation? The answer is yes, as long as what is being done is regulated by chapter four. So there may be things, maybe many home occupation, it depends on the use, it depends on the location, I would suppose, that would trigger or not trigger it, and it's my underst, and I, and I don't know that regardless if it's written here or not, if certain thing triggers the compliance with that, and I don't think it matters that it be written here or not, they're still supposed to be complying with X, Y, and Z. I think, with the idea is, how can you enforce? The idea is, what is the ability to enforce certain thing that may, may be enforceable or ask for compliance? But the idea here is that it's a step in the right direction. Because there is a huge draw, it's, it's, I mean... Because there is a huge draw, I mean definitely that comes from.
Then what's the difference between growing me- growing medical marijuana as a home occupation or as a commercial? What's the difference?
I think there's a different number of plans that you're going to be allowed.
Under the under hour.
I don't know. I can't answer that, John.
Well, I mean, they don't consider it commercial. I mean, a primary caregiver can grow enough marijuana for five people, I believe plus himself. At least that's what it was four years ago, uh whether they changed the rules and regulations since then. So he and he can have, by their rules and regulations, a certain number of flammable plants per client, a certain number of six-inch plants per client, a certain weight per client.
And that is specifically considered non-commercial? See, that's.
The question of commercial or not commercial pertaining to to chapter four is not based on the use. It's based in this case where it's being done. If it's in a house, it would not be commercial, I guess, when I hear. If it's an apartment, then it's commercial because the apartment's seen as a commercial venture.
I mean, I don't think the state considers it a commercial operation.
If I can clarify too, if if an individual has a home um and they're using and and they're growing it within the confines of the home. Okay, within the building that they're living in, home office, home occupation is one thing. If they decide to build a building.
Or in the garage?
Or in the garage, or somewhere else to produce, then it becomes more than just a home occupation. Now it becomes a commercial operation of where there could, it has the potential for a larger type of operation. That's when we may get involved with it from there. Because then you're talking about major requirements for sprinklering, major requirements for the extraction equipment that's required um versus using what they're using now um uh as far as flammables and combustibles.
Let me throw another wrench here. Same like home occupation is small engine repair like for lawn mowers, but I do it in the garage. Now do I have to uh sprinkler the garage? Cause it's.
It would.
Does it matter what it is that I'm doing and which building?
If it becomes a commercial operation and you have employees or someone else helping you, it very well could. That I can't answer for sure. I mean, if they're doing it on their own, it may not.
Difference between repairing engines and growing a few plants in the garage?
But what's the difference between having it here, having it here or not here doesn't mean you have to comply with it or not comply with it? It's because he has an ordinance that's adopted and that's the home, that that language be listed on our occup- occupation on as a reminder does not.
Okay, but.
Take away the fact that someone should be complying with it if it's in another ordinance.
But would you define the same same thing that you would be doing in the house for growth as a primary caregiver? You'd have room in the house for this. You'd have room in the garage, same number of plants, same small number. But now because it's in an outbuilding, it would be considered a commercial just because of the location? Because this.
This definition.
This is not clear cut.
This definition of home occupation says any occupations customarily conducted entirely within the dwelling unit.
Okay.
So i- if you take it outside the dwelling unit, then it's not a home occupation anymore.
All right.
I I would think.
Cause I think it years ago was defined as, you know, living in the home or.
Clearly incidental and subordinate to the use of the dwelling unit for dwelling purposes.
Covers accessory structures. Okay, very good.
A home occupation is an accessory use to a dwelling unit.
Meaning it's incidental.
So a standalone garage with lights and watering and circulation, that's not.
Is that the definition that you're reading for home occupation?
Yeah, page fourteen. I don't know if we changed that.
Well, there's there's a section on home occupations and it goes into a little more detail. Where you limit it to normal fifty percent of the square footage of your dwelling and different things like that.
Oh, okay.
Does not permit anything in an accessory structure?
I think it might be. I can't. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so I missed that. Sorry, I just went right to the definitions.
That's right. But I wanna make a point, they are limited, they can't exceed fifty percent of the square footage of their structure.
That's a lot of plant.
Well, typically for a normal home, you know, that's not really, when you get large plants, that's not really a lot of plants. So with the lights and everything they're gonna have, so you know.
Are we ready to move on to the next section or?
No.
He's trying.
No, 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 no. Okay, so we're at this point because lawyers have decided they changed their mind from what they thought four years ago when this first come into effect of what it is now that the city can
Mm-hmm.
regulate these. Have they also decided, and I don't know whether the rules or regulations for the primary caregiver part of it, not dispensaries, has changed from four years ago, but four years ago, they were terrible. Especially from the enforcement standpoint, from inspection standpoint. Have the lawyers decide, can the city develop their own inspection standards, enforcement standards? They still have to go by
So.
The state rules and regulations.
There's still, so the the opinions on that is they're still staying away from that. Um the municipal association says you can hold into the same licensing process and requirement of getting a license than you can any other ones. And then but there's other opinions that out there that says don't even get into this. We're going to, this is gonna be a short-lived thing right now. This is going to be changing probably in the next six months or seven months. Uh it's just to hold us over right now until we know what's going on with the state. But uh right now, we, the way it's structured, they're supposed to come from a license. I'd be very surprised anybody's gonna come from a license. And let's be frank.
So the moratoriums are gonna evaporate and you want some, you want this in place.
Correct. This is a holdover, this is to hold us over until the next phase of medical of marijuana, yeah.
It does not involve dispensary at all?
Not right now.
And you're not gonna charge a fee for license?
I can't say, I can't, I don't even know if we charge a fee for license. That's not.
We don't, no.
We don't.
The states, they can't fee to the state anymore.
Do they?
Well, I'll take that back.
Don't they get a percentage of tax or something?
If they commit their home occupation permit based on this, there is a there's a business license they need to get, which is ten dollars, so it's not gonna break up.
So this is really a ho- to hold us over until the next phase? The the I was that guy says the rest of the story, the rest of the story is going to unfold with marijuana.
Michelle, I have a question on performance standards on that chart. Um where the line where it says childcare maximum of six children in the um primary caregiver operation NA. That implies that someone can't have a daycare and be have a marijuana.
No, I just said not applicable because it's not, because see, so that table um Mike was created to address zones. If you if you look at it, so what was allowing, was not allowing certain zone. So what we added is we added a third column that pertained to use and not zone. So if you look at a use and what standard applied for that use, childcare did not apply for marijuana. It just didn't make sense and we said not applicable. Because the first two columns pertains to standards applicable in that zone. The last column is the standard applicable for that use.
So all right, my question is, I I wanna apply for a childcare operation and American marijuana to the same residence. Can I do that?
That's a question for Dwight.
Well, unless it's prohibited, yes, you could. And I don't know how the state, they, there's a certain, I can't remember. It's if you have four kids or less, not counting your own kids, you don't have to get licensed as a daycare anymore. But Mike and I deal with the fire marshal's office and the state when they license a daycare over that and they get very strict when you've got twelve kids.
It'd be a happy daycare.
So, you know, it's one of those things is and I'm sure we're not catching everything here in what we're doing. It's like Michelle said, it's gonna morph, it's gonna change. We're gonna make, we're gonna keep going as we need to. But right now, we're just trying to come up with a way that we can kind of limit what's going on. Up in my area, the towns are getting calls every week on large parcels of land for some reason they think name's the place to go. I don't know. They haven't met mosquitoes yet, I don't think. You know, it's just one of those things and, you know, we have to start somewhere and I, you know, I support Michelle and this is where we need to start right now. If we have bugs come up on the home occupation thing, we'll deal with them. If there's nothing we can do with it, I'll, we'll come back, give you books again.
If if you have to, if you wanna start a daycare in your home license, um there are several things that have to be done. The one you have to apply to the Department of Health and Human Services. Um I don't know what their rules and regulations regarding that is. I do know the fire marshal's office is very, as Dwight said, specific in detail as far as fire separations um and other types of life safety and fire safety things that would have to be incorporated into the home prior to that happening. And when they inspect that home for daycare, it's not just the space for the daycare, it's the entire home, basement, et cetera, et cetera. So if things are happening in that home, they're gonna know it and they will bring it to the attention of DHS or they will make sure that it complies with the minimum standards of NFPA one or whatever that's going on there.
My my concern has been that nothing we do today will hinder other home occupations in the future.
Yeah, I I feel comfortable it will not. And John, if we were finding that it would, I think we would go into high gear to make sure to adjust them. So.
Well, I I'm trying to think of your status. You're talking as part of Michelle's team here?
Exactly. They just don't give me a chair always, if I might.
Do you wanna take public comments on each sections that may be easier than to just bulk it up at the end?
Yeah, David?
Yeah, I just wanna reinforce what Michelle is saying that we don't view this as the endpoint on this issue. Matter of fact, what is so confusing is that the legislation around recreational marijuana has grabbed the headlines, but meanwhile, there's been proposed legislation around medicinal being done by a separate committee in the legislature, I believe the committee on Health and Human Services. And until we can sort out where all of this is, you know, we it's hard to see where the landing point's gonna be, but we believe this is a prudent step for the city going forward. Uh cause at this point, we honestly don't know where it's gonna go.
Why? Oh yes. Is there any public comment on this so far? I hear none. Go ahead.
So am I ready to move to the Wilson lighting ratio standards?
Well.
So we're very proud to introduce uh tonight the changes to the lighting standards known as the Wilson ratio uh that has been used by the planning board for several years right now.
Will this, do you anticipate this becoming a national standard?
It could be and uh that we believe that if you uh are recommended to the council and the council approves, that it would result in fewer requests for waivers uh from the planning board. Basically, it just adds, so what we've been doing for the last few years, which is um, that's because the font I use is so big. Let me, um basically, it says that in instances where this difficult for development to meet the minimum at any point or the average maximum at any point standard, the following elimination ratios, in-foot candles will be allowed. The ratio of the maximum at any point to the minimum at any point shall be twenty to one or less. And number two, the ratio of the maximum at any point to the average maximum at any point shall be four to one or less. Um in addition to that, uh there was a discrepancy how we measured the foot candle. Was it at grade or was it at uh three foot from the ground? So I crossed that grade to make sure that that was uh in the title there, the table, so it'd be consistent with the definition in chapter fourteen. So that's what I am proposing.
Um I guess my only comment is that 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 ratio, I believe it's considered a contrast ratio.
It's funny you talk about this because I was talking about one of the things we look is those big contrasts. Um.
So if the word contrast could be like attached along any place you use the word ratio?
Yes.
I think that would be more clear to other people.
Yep. This is a non-substantial change. I'm sure that that we'll be able to follow through with that.
I would suggest, however, putting contrast ratio in the definitions so that anyone reading the ordinance will understand what is meant by contrast ratio.
I will try to add a definition to that if I'm able to.
Yeah, I think that would just, using the word contrast, that's where I think that just clarifies things a little bit.
You remember, I cannot bring major substantial changes to um to the council. I would have to make the change and come back to you. Uh so I will see and we, you know, there's things that could come back next month. This is not like the end of the world, but I will see what I can do if it's a non-substantial change.
We do not deal with end of the world here.
No, we don't. So do you wanna take comments or question by the board or the audience on that, the Wilson ratio? Wilson contrast.
Do do any of us have any questions about the Wilson?
The contrast ratios.
Well, there will be rewarded for.
No, the citizens of Ellsworth will be rewarded by reduced nighttime glare. That's the reward.
His reward is the great respect that we will pay him.
Right, along doubling the planning board's hours.
Yes.
Excellent.
Do you wanna see if there's comments from the audience?
Does anyone wish to comment on this uh lighting standard change? No, no.
We're almost getting to the interesting part.
Okay.
So, um so the third change is USDs and ASTs. That stands for underground underground storage tanks and above ground storage tanks. This is addressed on uh article eight, page seven and eight. So what we had, we had literally something that I could track back to the nineteen nineties and I bet you it was there before. So what you see on eight oh seven, on page seven, which is crossed out, suggested to go, is something that's been done for there for thirty years or so. Um so we realized that this um um distance between uh development where gasoline and or diesel fuels are to be stored or sold, uh to be three hundred feet from any budding residential property line, where not only wasn't, didn't make sense, was not even consistent with state law. Okay, so what we did is we are proposing to take this away, okay? And add basically reference the state law that pertains to this, which prevails no matter what, but why we're leaving it there is just a reminder for us as administrators that this exists, so it's not going to be lost. Then um the box on your left is a non-numbered box, is not really part of the ordinance. That's just um what we call um educational or anything to help the readers understand what's going on. So this box here will be part of the ordinance. This box here is not uh enforceable. It's just, we have several of those boxes throughout the ordinance. It's what we call an unnumbered um numbered table or something. So simply refers to uh the two state laws that pertains to citing a facilities. And I'm sorry about the size of the font. I really didn't realize it was that big. I mean, small.
And and you didn't give us magnifying glasses.
No, I didn't. That's not in the budget.
What is the difference between oil storage tanks and like petroleum and diesel fuel? Are they, are they all the same? Does that term cover all?
That's a state law. I'd have to go back to the state law to see the definition.
So I guess when I read that, I think, oh, heating oil.
Heating oil is within a certain amount of storage, I believe. The regular heating oil tank does not apply.
That post significant oil tanks and other facilities, oil storage. So does that cover gasoline?
Yes. The, well, it's to, yes and no. Um there's certain things that are required for underground storage tanks um by DOT standards as far as how they're designed. Um interstitial space tanks or double wall tanks, um sensors. Um there are some tanks that. There are some tanks that, I don't know there are any single wall tanks now, but it, a lot of it has to do with construction type. And the, the class or commodity of the fuel that's being stored in them, such as the difference between gasoline and a combustible, combustible meaning fuel, oil, diesel, motor oil, those are all combustible materials. Gasoline is a flammable liquid, so there, there are construction differences.
And they're all covered by thirty eight MRSA?
Yes, I believe so, under, and under the NFPA guidelines for, for that kind of, um, tank or installation, et cetera, et cetera.
So whatever's being stored in the tank, the tank has a, a design.
That is correct.
Just for that.
That is correct.
Kind of product.
Yes.
And it's, it's, I believe it's DEP, not DOT.
DEP regulations as to how it's installed. The, the tank design, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't even get into that, but the tank design, there's a specific design that probably by the Department of Transportation, federal Department of Transportation.
So when we talk about drinking water supplies and contamination, it's, it's all those tanks are.
That is correct.
Under that same.
That is correct. The tanks now, like I say, are double walled with an interstitial space, specific monitoring within that interstitial space in the event of a leak from the inner tank to protect the groundwater. That's the whole idea behind it.
Okay. All right, so it, it sounds like this is not too narrowly focused and it is very general. It's gonna cover all these.
Correct. And we're not even administering this. We're just, this is a state law. Just we remember it exists. We can direct people to it. We're not getting into that.
So we're looking to repeal the three hundred and foot buffer from residential line?
Correct.
What's the setback difference from the state law? Is there one?
The state law says.
Doesn't that box on the right side have to be three hundred feet from a well?
Exactly.
But does a well have to be three hundred feet from a tank? What I'm saying is if you're, there's no well there now. Other property owner wants to drill a well. Is that property owner require or the welder required to make sure it's three hundred feet away from a tank?
I don't know. We have to go back to the rules and see what's going on there. That's a good question.
Having grown up in the Boston area, this is a big deal.
What?
Having grown up in the Boston area, this is a big deal. A lot of old tanks down there and a lot of properties have been destroyed because of.
Correct. And, and this whole thing came out of the old tanks being removed and that's how this whole, thirty eighth and section thirteen ninety one and ninety nine came out is from that whole contamination of about twenty something years ago that.
Or further, some of these tanks are fifty, sixty years old.
Yep.
So I mean, pre existing tanks is, is the primary issue. You know, if you remove a setback, someone could build a house fifty feet from, you know, a, a seventy year old tank.
So the good thing for us is it basically refers that, you know, this, this applies, we're not missing it. You know, gives us the box of what it is basically, but it's, we're saying that this is not in our.
Where did the, explain to me where the box came from again? This is part of thirty eight MRSA?
It's a mix of the two. It's the state domain. They have a.
And the DEP?
Yep.
So these two sources that you cite here is where this box came from?
Correct. All this writing is not me.
Citing facilities posing risk to drinking water, citing facilities. So you're, you're gonna replace eight oh, you're gonna call, make the title of eight oh seven citing facilities posing risk to drinking water? And then you say oil storage tanks and other facilities?
That's, that's state language as well.
Okay, so this becomes very. Okay. I think I understand. Drinking, so this is a drinking water protection.
Well, I can say to Michelle is tanks a lot.
That's well said. Do we both see if there's any question from the floor?
Yes, so is there any public comment on this matter? No, there are none. So is the, uh, planning board prepared to make recommendations?
No, I have one more section to talk about.
One more?
The definitions.
Oh, okay, yes.
So that's basically all technicalities. We had some doubling of the definitions, um.
I'm glad you found that, cause I stumbled across one of those the other day.
So that was just like, oh boy. Then we adjusted, I think, one. Which one? So I, yeah, I did a summary on the front. I already forgot. Deleted the definitions on page six for card holder. Parking law, I deleted a whole bunch of definition and then. That pertain to home occupation signs, that doesn't make, just basically it's all technicalities, things that did not make sense or it's like housekeeping. And I added the public works director to the definition of who is part of the TRT. Steve's telling me what I did. Let Steve talk on that one.
Good job, Steve.
So that's if there's any question on the definition, I'd love to answer those questions. I mean, also a public hearing for the definitions.
Is there any public comment on the definitions changes? Close the public hearing.
Okay, so.
What would the board like to do?
Okay, public hearing, mentioned that, uh, proposed amendments. Uh, Mr. Chairman, with regard to these proposed amendments to the Ellsworth Code of Ordinance as Chapter fifty six Unified Development Ordinance, as detailed in the materials, I, I make a motion that we recommend the adoption of these changes to the city council with an attempt to add that contrast ratio item to the definition for lighting, um, otherwise recommended as written to the city council.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of a favorable recommendation?
Thank you. Okay. So.
So I hold it my turn.
Dave.
Next item, our item five, this proposed amendment to the City of Ellsworth official land use map. The proposal is to consider the rezoning of land on the east side of Route one seventy two, the Surrey Road, from the neighborhood zoning district to the urban zoning district. Proposed rezoning includes seven parcels or portions thereof totaling thirty seven point eight four plus or minus acres on tax map twenty.
Okay. So in your paperwork, you should have received, received Exhibit A, which was the zoning map of the entire city. You should have received a yellow, mainly yellow map for proposed Surrey Road rezoning. You should have received Exhibit C, which is the aerial, and you should have received on the table, the colorful, um, traffic signal table. So what, what happened is I'm gonna start with the aerial. So the aerial is, we're on Route one seventy two heading towards Surrey. So the bottom of the map heads towards Surrey. The top of the map is north towards downtown Ellsworth. Uh, there is, um, for you that are, the people that are familiar with the area, we're talking between one seventy two and the water, we're talking the area that basically is composed of, uh, the former Ben's Store, the office building, the, um, after that to the south, you have Saunders Automotive. And then you have one or two properties and you have Ethical Court, which is a mobile home park. So what happened is that the Ben's Store, which is north, I'm not sure if it's still called Ben's Store, but for the purpose of the exercise, I'm gonna call it Ben's Store, uh, was purchased. And, um, through the purchase, uh, I, people that have traveled there will have seen, uh, drastic changes to that building. Uh, there's a question of the owner that says, it looks like in the zoning right now, I am not allowed to sell fuel anymore. I was like, oh, okay. So we did some research and looked at what was going on and noticed that not only was that, uh, location not able to sell fuel, none of these commercial, those three commercial properties would be allowed to expand. Uh, mainly, I want to say, uh, um, the automotive store, for example, they would not be able to expand. The mobile home park would not be able to expand under the existing zoning of twenty eighteen. We took a quick look of ownership and existing uses and we definitely felt that for the most part, there was a different commercial character to that small area. And we noticed that a lot of people that use those areas are people that are on their way back, you know, to Surrey back and forth, or the people from Ethical Court. And there was actually a use, so the idea is a person that lives in that area, if there was fuel available, for example, would not have to do an extra trip onto High Street, add to the congestion to get fuel and come back. They would be able to just head home towards the Bluehead Peninsula, Castine, et cetera, et cetera, and grab fuel there if they wanted to. And we also noticed that, so what we're proposing is a rezoning of that area to kind of brace the existing character and to allow some of the users as we see them today to expand. We provided, um, also I just want to point out that out of the seven parcels, I believe that, is it five of them? I believe that five are in one ownership. It's either Pat Jordan or one of Pat Jordan's LLCs, Pat and Ronald Jordan. And there are two other properties that are not into, uh, into Jordan ownership. There is the Ben's Store, which is not in the Jordan ownership, and then there's Ethical Properties, which is not in Jordan properties. We had directed and indirect contact with all the people on this list with the exception of Ethical Properties. I, it's not that we sought contact, it's just that it just happened. What else? So we're looking to change, if you take this, we're looking to change from neighborhood zone to urban zone. What we tried to highlight in this, um, in this, uh, table is that the changes were really small. They were not, uh, you know, we got to go from allowing a house to no longer allowing a house, just allowing a a chicken farm, just get something that's really drastic. But, so it shows that there's really kind of, um, the transition from that zone to the other zone is, um, very fluid, if that's the right word.
Now, question. Why is this not spot zoning? If the new zone doesn't, apart, the zone is being changed.
I didn't even think of spot zoning in this case. I didn't see it at all as spot zoning. I saw it as, um, the thirty eight acres, which was not in one ownership that we have one residential property, two residential properties, I believe. And I just didn't, I didn't even see that spot zoning, to tell you the truth.
Looks at to me.
What?
It's kind of looks at to me because it's not.
I'm not saying prepare to answer that because I didn't even think about that at that at all.
I agree with John. I mean, that was, that was my big thought. I mean, basically, I don't, I don't really have heartache about a gas station there at Ben's Store, but obviously you can't do that just for that property. So that looks like you've taken the properties around Ben's Store, included in a bigger piece right in the middle of the orange zone, the neighborhood zone. I don't see anywhere else on the official land use map where there's a urban zone located within the neighborhood zone. I mean, you're gonna have neighborhood, urban, neighborhood on that stretch of road. And the neighborhood zone is, according to the definition, is, is basically for residents. And granted, there are some commercial properties there and, and because of the way the zoning had was written, you know, the trail park can't expand, the Buddy Saunders can't expand. But I think you're kind of destroying the, the flavor of the neighborhood zone by changing it to an urban zone. And also kind of looking down the road because once you have that thirty seven acre urban zone, then probably it's gonna expand on either side. Uh, that's a general, generally what happens with, with some of the zoning changes. They, they broaden. Now, if you broaden to the north, towards town, there's four pieces of property. You have the Bennix property, uh, John Moore's, Bill Cadoo's.
Yep.
And the Dunleavy's. And that's, oh, probably about sixty or seventy acres. And when you look at what the change of uses are from the neighborhood zone to the urban zone, one thing that really strikes me is you can now, in the urban zone, you can now build, if I read this correctly, a hundred, hundred thousand square foot community shopping center. Am I reading this right? Down, down near the bottom, you can have a small shopping center. I don't know what the square footage of that is. Community is a hundred thousand square feet according to the definition.
Let's not like shopping center, meaning like you can have, yes, a commercial, yes. I don't know if shopping center is the right word, but yes.
But you're talking about a hundred square, a hundred thousand square foot building going in on this piece of, you know, on the thirty seven acre someplace.
Now, I'm, I'm very interested with what you guys are saying. We, we felt that, so we looked at the other, what you're saying is maybe allow just the sale of fuel in that zone as a way to do this. But then when we took a closer look to what was going on in that area, we realized that there was already, um, there's, um, uh, higher density housing across the street that's under construction. We realized that there was already a certain character, kind of a little node happening there. So we thought that it would be truer, if that's a word, to the character of that kind of node to like allow them to continue to prosper instead of just changing, just allowing in the neighborhood zone the sales of fuel. Because if you do that, then in the neighborhood zone, you could have a gas station pretty much anywhere. So I mean, it's definitely, it's, it's interesting what you have to say and I truly, uh, respect that and, um, truly thought we were on the, on, on the right road, so I'm, I'm, I am listening.
Kind of on this byline is, now has this been sent out, this information been sent out to a butters?
Correct.
Now, generally speaking, you know, zoning issues, people get a letter and, oh, what's this mean?
They got the letter and they got, uh, this, the map here.
We got it a week ago.
Okay, but were those people told, okay, if we change the zone right across from Hillside Drive, roughly, somebody can put up a hundred thousand square foot?
No.
So I'm gonna answer that. So there's two questions going on. There's, there's comments from the floor, which I would like it to just hang on a bit. We have given notice, do notice as we are required to provide notice with articles and, and numbers and, and reference. And we did get one call, which we provided additional information to that person, it's my understanding. But we did give proper notice as we, the way we give notice for all of these matters. There's a process that is, um, um, prescribed by state law and that we follow very closely, so. And we went beyond, so what you're supposed to do is you have to notify the people in the zone and the people directly abutting the zone. What we do is we did the people in the area and not just immediately abutting, but we did three hundred feet.
Either three hundred or five hundred. I can go back and check.
Okay, three or five, three to five hundred, we have to, which we didn't have to beyond to make sure that nobody is left.
Beyond, beyond this boundary or beyond the neighborhood zone boundary?
Beyond the block. Beyond the black outline that you see there.
Okay.
Even if you allow.
Okay, I see one more thing about the, the process, I'm sorry, John. We also notify them, A, of this meeting, and also, they've been notifying the same letter of the council meeting. So, they know that these are happening. It may not make it to council, I mean, I don't know, but definitely, we, we notified, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
Even if you allow, if you'll say, if, if this, no, okay, I won't get any. Yeah. The definition of convenience store is a small establishment which accommodates neighborhood needs for groceries and which may sell as accessory uses prepared food for carryout. The sales area for such use shall be indoors only. And the total enclosed areas for such use should not exceed four thousand square feet. Since all the sales must be carried out indoors, how can you have a fuel, fueling operation outdoors?
Convenience store is allowed in both sides, urban and.
Yes, but another thought, if you change it so that you could then have fuel sales, it seems a convenience store couldn't have that, because it's not indoors.
I'm, I'm less apt to go that route, where you adopt fuel sales.
I think gas station is a different, a definition.
Yeah, there's a separate use.
Yeah, but.
The idea that you would change.
The store is not a gas station.
Right.
It's a convenience store.
I'm not sure if I'm completely following right now.
Well, the store is a convenience store.
Mm-hmm. What store?
Benz.
Okay.
Or whatever it's new name, it's a convenience store.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Which has to have all sales within the structure. How can you have an outside fuel sale?
Because I think ga, because the gas station is on a different, a different definition.
But it's, it's not a gas station.
It's not a gas station right now, correct.
I, I think.
We're, we're, we're saying that if you change it to urban, then the sale of gas would be, is allowed. I'm not sure I'm following.
At a convenience store?
What?
At a convenience store.
Well, but I, that's why when I'm, I'm like, look, you go to a lot of these rural stores, they have gas.
Well, yep, that's because they're allowed to have gas wherever that, that particular, that particular spot, obviously.
There are dual stores, it's multiple use. Most gas stations today are convenience stores and a gas station. That's become the trend, but I think the way this is written, the one use is sale gasoline, gas station. And then we have definition for a convenience store.
It's just, that needs to be cleaned up in some way, if we're gonna do this.
So, so it says that gas station, a place where gasoline, motor oil, lubricants, or other minor accessories are retailed directly to the public on the premises in combination with the retailing of items typically found in a convenience store.
There's a tie right there.
There is a tie-in, but I think this is a matter of the cart and the horse. It's now a convenience store, and you then, you would then have to have a change of use, but that's a different process. But I'm still, I'm still hung on the problem of the, the spot zoning, that you're just picking up an area.
I'm not sure it's spot zoning.
Can I ask some questions?
It's detached from, from the zones to be changed into, by quite a distance from any, from that zone anywhere.
You said that there's some existing uses that aren't allowed to expand in this area? So, these are?
Non-conform, grandfather non-conforming.
Okay, when, when did they become non-conform?
Twenty?
Twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, when we changed, we did the major reholy ordinance.
And so, the zoning before then was that you changed the zoning district? Or you changed the definition of the zonings?
We changed the zoning district, in the definition, but we changed.
So, the owners of that area, their, their zone became neighborhood.
Were in a rural, they were a rural zone, it was called a rural zone. And it was a smorgasbord of everything you can have on earth. I mean, I don't know what she thinks, Steve, but.
So, it went from, it went from rural to neighborhood. Those uses were left there as grandfathered?
Correct. And beyond to me, they couldn't, I mean, I didn't even realize that, like, for example, Saunders Automotive could not expand. I didn't notice, I didn't even.
Not expand in what way? They only have one piece of property, you mean, expand in square footage of his building?
He can't say he wants to expand his building by twenty percent, he can't do it. He can't even do it in one percent.
And the same with the mobile home park, they can't add another unit?
Correct.
Even though they have acreage or land area?
So, just I wanna read, but spot zoning is, is one definition here. The process of singling out a small parcel of land for a used classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners.
Can I ask a related question?
Yep.
The Ellsworth Urban Core. I have a map here from a while ago that shows the Urban Core comes out of Ellsworth along both sides of that road. The Black House is in it.
It goes to the Surrey line, I believe, almost.
And then, there's Westwood Drive, Mountain View Drive, Hillside Drive. That, all that west side of the road is also urban zone? I'm sorry, Urban Core?
Uh, me being smart tonight, I didn't bring my ordinance, but I can find out in a second here.
This, this is the map that I have, it's two thousand and eight.
Oh, there you go. So, the Urban Core is not part, for ex, so there's, the Urban, so there was a downtown map that's, that's adopted by the council. There's an Urban Core map adopted by the council. And those are basically non-zoning district related matters. They were just that, we ended up kind of wanting certain thing in those sections, and we referred them to it, if it's in the, for example, for the lighting standards. So, that's the only reason the Urban Core started. I keep trying to remember why we began the Urban Core. And I wonder if it was for the pine tree program?
So, the question is, is, does this, you reclassifying this area like this, does it qualify to be part of the Urban Core? Would you consider changing that boundary to include it?
I, this is a different matter, but I would probably have to possibly look into that.
Okay.
So, basically, for example, for the ordinance, how it would apply, if my memory is correct, I think it's mostly in lighting. So.
And sidewalks.
Yeah, so there would be, if you don't expand the Urban Core, they would be subject to lower lighting, if I'm just thinking correctly here. Overall, then, if they were in the Urban Core, even for a gas station.
And, and parking, they're allowed to do, like, clustered parking?
What?
In the Urban Core, aren't there rules about shared parking?
That applies in, in the downtown area.
Or is that downtown? Okay, sorry.
You know, I just wanna say that if, if you feel, I mean, I don't wanna, there's, also, there's people in the audience that would like to comment. But I wanna say that, I wanna do what's the right thing, and I, I want to, I don't wanna necessarily rush into this. I know that there, there's people that would like to be able to sell gas. But if there are better ways to accomplish this, you know, it's, we, what I'm trying to say is, we possibly can rethink how we can do this, but I think that there's definitely a will to allow gas to be sold there for several reasons. I think it's a benefit to traffic on our, in our business district, on the corridor there. And I think it definitely mirrors the character of that area. I don't think it's an incompatible thing. I don't see it as spot zoning in.
I mean, under the zone purpose, part of the neighborhood zone says that the purpose of this zone is protect, existing and attract new residential neighborhoods. Now, to take thirty-five, thirty-seven, however many acres, out of the neighborhood zone, right in the middle of a neighborhood zone, and turn it into urban, whatever good intentions there are, I think destroys that purpose. Especially when you look at what can be allowed in the urban zone that cannot be allowed in the neighborhood zone. I think the trade-offer, what can be allowed in the urban zone is, is just too much to change that from a neighborhood zone to the urban zone.
Doesn't it also change the lot size and setbacks?
It does.
I don't know. It just gives them more room, and setbacks aren't as restrictive. I, I'd like to just state my opinion about this matter. I live on the north part of Ellsworth, and I really like the fact that there used to be a convenience store right at the end of my road. So, that was damn useful to not have to run into town to get, like, stuff. So, I can identify with this, this area of comrades along this stretch of road.
Right. And that's why there is, there may be ways.
And furthermore, I think that the, the idea that you've clustered several lots here together with some non-conforming uses that have a pretty heavy restriction on them right now, bring them into some conformity and establish this pocket of activity in, in my personal opinion, and I don't live there, and I don't own property there, and I'm not a resident. But that entire stretch of one seventy-two, as you come out of Ellsworth and head towards Surrey, all along that waterfront there, that is like a very opportune place for growth to happen. And it doesn't all have to be residential. I, I think there are some sort of industrial sort of uses that pop into the zone when you do this, but I think other things appear there that can be a core of, a, a central part of, of growth. So, thinking long-term, ten, twenty, thirty years down the road in Ellsworth, maybe that's where that starts. So, that's my feeling from like a planning perspective.
But, once you rezoned this to urban,
Yep.
then your expansion in this whole area becomes possible, it's possible to easily rezone.
Right. To urban, all around?
What's to say, ten years from now, someone buys in the, one of these pockets that is neighborhood zone, saying, and come back before the board to say, let's make that urban, I mean, it's a domino effect.
So, if, if that, if that's the way that the growth wants to happen, if the people around it don't want that to happen, this is, they need to speak up, if they want this to stay neighborhood. You know, we need that feedback, I think, and we have to have these public meetings. The city council has to have public meetings, the people that abut this whole area. That was one of my primary questions for tonight, who's been told about this? If it's been properly advertised to everybody and people know what's going on here, objections need to be brought forward.
I think, I think, I think it was thirty or forty, somewhere in the thirty to forty mailings that went out. I don't know the exact number, but when we did the properties inside that black boundary plus, and I think it was five hundred feet beyond that border, I think the mailing was with somewhere around thirty-five, if that's helpful at all.
Okay.
That got direct, you know, aside from the public notice in the paper, or aside from, you know, the website, whatever. But those were direct mailings that went out to people in, in, and abutting that, that area.
Do they ever do supplemental mailings? Cause like, to John's point, the fact that all of these things now become valid uses in that zone, maybe that's not clear?
So, what, before we even go to the public, public comments, what, you know, I just wanna say that there's, there's still things that comes to my mind, that could be better ways to do this, that would be, that would probably try to address some of the comments I heard from John John and Darrell tonight. There's two things that came to my mind right away, and I was like, oh, we could have done this, and we could have done that. So, you know, this is one way to do it. If this is found to be inappropriate by, you know, through the, the public hearings, there would be other ways to, for example, you could do a new zone that would be, because one of the things you said, John, is like a node in the middle of nowhere. I think that's not uncommon. You have a lot of small commercial nodes that cross word, cross roads in rural areas all the time, where all of a sudden, you have like a little node that, that happens. I think it's how you capture that node and how you're allowed it to, to unfold is what is important. And also, in this case, with respect, maybe, so we could possibly, and just, and I'm not saying we're gonna do this, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, there's other things we could do that would be, allow some people to continue operating, but maybe ask for more buffers, or whatever it is that we could do. And we could also allow in that zone, just gas station, under very more restrictive dimensional requirement potentially, or whatever. So, there's things we can do. I think, you know, we hear in comments right now, and I think that's what's important.
I wanna think that there's a less intrusive way that you kinda have in the back of your mind, you know, I would certainly encourage that. I, I mean, I, I don't particularly have an issue with it, I don't think, with having a gas station at that location. I do have an issue with a gas station going into that location this way.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
The other thing is, you got.
I think it was a fact, um, what?
You got a certain, the acres, the thirty-seven acres that are undeveloped. So, we're opening more area, what to can do. And that might not be good, might be, you know, not good, I don't know.
Right. This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak on this matter?
Well, I do, definitely.
Then please come up and introduce yourself.
Yeah, do you wanna go first? No?
No.
Let's not argue about it. There's plenty of time.
I'm Valerie Pure Court, I live at one Hillside Drive. I'm directly across from the nice new store. And I guess I have a couple of questions as to where are the pumps gonna be located? I don't know if you wanna answer that, or?
Excuse me, all questions should be addressed to the.
Do you know where the pumps will be located?
No, we, there's no active application for this.
Okay.
This is a zoning matter.
Okay, so, so I have several notes that I've been taking since I got here. And I would like to promote that we keep it residential. I've lived there on the Surrey Road for thirty years. I've never run out of gas before I got into High Street. I don't see the need for a gas station across the street from my house. I think that, you know, you, you think about keeping the residential neighborhood together, you know, and I will certainly, if we have another opportunity, go to my neighbors and ask them to come to a meeting, so we can all discuss this. I don't think anyone really recognized what was happening and the impact it's gonna have. But I think that the spot zoning is certainly a, a big issue. And I would like to, let's see. Also, if, as you mentioned, heading south towards Surrey, you're gonna have traffic crossing the midline, you know, the center line, and, which they'll do for the business anyway. But I just, I get passed all the time going into Hillside. And I think it's gonna be possible accidents, and, you know, the traffic is gonna be terrible. And especially in the summer. And I just think that the other options for the rest of that acreage is a little, a little scary when you think about what Pat Jordan might do, and not to say anything about that, but it does open up some questions. And then, also, the, you know, the ambiance of having coffee on the porch was talked about. But then, you're gonna have the smell of gasoline, and I don't think that that's necessarily a good thing. And I also think that, you know, there aren't any other gas stations in town with the residents above it or so close. So, I'd like to question that, cause there're gonna be two residences above it. And what else?
Actually, we have precedent for that.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, I just would like to urge that we keep it the same. I don't.
Thank you.
There's a big push for another gas station in town, we have plenty. And I know, you know, coming from North Ellsworth, as you said, it was convenient, but I think getting to High Street, you know, a mile away is pretty convenient too, so, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Sure, I'll say a couple things. Good evening, everyone, I'm Brian Muir, my wife Josie, just for the record, it's, uh, it's gonna be a Josie's Country Store. And, um, you know, Valerie, I I kinda get your, I forget where you're coming from, I grew up on Laurel Street.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and, uh, I spent a whole bunch of time in that neighborhood, I used, that was my whole paper route.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Could you please address the board?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just, I, you know, it's it's a personal thing, I I get it.
Yeah.
You know, I I completely understand it, and my, it's not that my wife and I are necessarily looking to, uh, you know, put a gas station tomorrow. We'd like to see if we, uh, could exercise that option, right? Now, that's, that's it, it's not like we're looking to put it in today, not necessarily looking to do it next month. Is it possible? Can we do it? I contend it is possible. You know, and that, uh, and that Ellsworth, you know, since I, since I grew up here, has grown quite a bit, you know, I mean, I I can remember it was a lot smaller, I went away for a whole bunch of years, I came back and it's grown a lot. Uh, I live in Surrey, that corridor is is very, uh, is very busy. Every time I have to get fuel, I'm going right into High Street, I'm getting fuel and and, uh, I contend that the number of folks that have stopped by and asked myself, are you putting in gas unsolicited, is astounding. There's a lot of, there's a lot of interest in it, right? It's not to be said, but I, I, again, I think it could be done in a manner that is, uh, aesthetically pleasing. And that would fit, uh, you know, fit, you know, fit the, someone's minds, the mind's eye, as opposed to um, looking like, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a chain, uh, like, like High Street, right? I I get that, you don't want it to look like High Street, it's kinda tacky, right? So, that that's all I gotta say is, we're we're not looking to come into the neighborhood and create a whole bunch of problems. But at the same time, um, I'd like to exercise, you know, the, um, is it an option? Could we do it? You know, and to, to answer your question, where would the pumps possibly go? I understand you're supposed to address the board, but she, she asked that question, um, that depends. Depends on, uh, you know, if we're given the option even install them at all, could they go out front? It's pretty tight. I think the building looks pretty nice from the road, it's got really good curb appeal, I'd like to maintain that if at all possible. So perhaps we don't do it at all. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone else wish to speak?
Steve Salisbury, four oh four Surrey Road. I listened to your comments, I don't agree necessarily this would be a spot zone change because it's inclusive of several lots and it's a substantial amount of acreage. It would be the natural progression, um, of that area to grow and that would be the starting point. Um, I s- I see the future build out of the Surrey Road being higher density, at least in the areas now served by city water and sewer that weren't historically served by those utilities. And those utilities now extend out to the trailer park. Um, I'm dating myself a bit, but I remember the days there was gasoline at Ben's store. Um, there was a single pump with a dial on it and it turned it one way, it was low lid, and the other way it was high octane. So I'm really dating myself, but, um, um, it'd be a shame not to allow, looking in hindsight, this, this area should not have been in neighborhood. Maybe it should have been its own zone. It would be a shame to see that trailer park in that area not be able to expand cause that is a high need in town. And and high density housing is is ideal because of those utilities out there. So, that, uh, neighborhood zone slightly precludes that, we did a high density project across the street at Jesse Dur's property. Um, but it could be higher density even, you know, taller buildings. So I would support a zone change in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Cole.
David Cole, city manager. Just a couple points, I agree with, uh, Mr. Salisbury and, uh, the city planner. I I don't see this as spot zoning, but that's a matter for lawyers to give opinions on as to whether or not it constitutes spot zoning. But obviously, good land use judgment is up to you and ultimately the city council is to what makes best interest for the city. Um, I would hope that, uh, uh, under any scenario, this could be, you know, if needed, explored further. The, um, the owners of Josie's store have said they would work with the neighborhood and the community, you know, towards a appropriate solution. I would like to say, being a former transportation person, uh, this is a state highway. And it connects, and it's a state highway because it connects to other communities and other corridors. And one would hope that, uh, a highway like this could accommodate fuel along it. And I will say, not any kind of scientific survey by any means, but from those people I've talked to, you know, they were mostly saying, you know, how great it would be to be able to access fuel, uh, along the road. And, uh, anyways, uh, again, I just ended by saying that I would hope that, uh, this can, you know, we can look for ways to, uh, provide this service in an appropriate way on the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I say one more thing before you make a decision?
Cover the stock, you?
I I just, um, would like to, uh, if if the city manager's okay with that, obviously, I would like to not bring it to a council at the next council meeting, but I'd like to hold it for a month and just look at a few more ideas, I think there was, there's clear, um, I I hear some clear direction, um, that I'm hearing and some concern, and I think we can do a bit better than we did. And I'd like to take a second stab at it, stab at it to see if we, um, can come up with something that would be more appropriate for that area and and, you know, by responding to some of the comments we heard from everybody tonight and the concerns.
I would suggest that rather than change the zone, that we can do it through definitions and a change of use in the whole zone, a minor change of use, which will allow a convenience store, which incidentally has a couple of gas pumps.
Okay, be careful, but, but just being said, I think we we can, we just, I just would like to look at a few more things and weigh the pros and cons of each, cause there's always an action, there's always a reaction to everything and and that can create more trouble down the road. But, um, I really don't believe it's a spot zoning, even if we made that area smaller, to tell you the truth. But I think that that waiting a month would not hurt and would give us a chance to think a bit more on this.
Okay, also give the board a chance to think more about it.
That's not good.
I'd like to offer something.
Well, but not necessarily.
I'd like to offer something that you've brought up before and and other projects like, um, subdivisions. You suggested that, like, a little bit more community outreach, putting together like.
Yeah, neighborhood meeting or something, yes.
Neighborhood meeting.
Yes.
I I think that might be very appropriate for this scenario.
You know, I, I'm doing another zone change in another area and we are scheduling a neighborhood meeting, cause we know it needs it, we didn't rea- I think we just misjudged it, to to be honest, I didn't, I really thought this was an obvious one and I think we just misjudged the, the impacts and I'm I'm happy for the comments and, uh, we'll continue and as, um, the owner of Benzor said, he's not in a rush to do this tomorrow. Uh, it's clear with his intention he would like, it's clearly heard from the, a member of the public and, uh, two members of the public, and I think we can make this work, but just do it a bit better, so.
So what would be the disposition of, uh, agenda item? I mean, it doesn't seem like we're on a track to do a recommendation and.
No.
Do we make a motion to deny this, or do we just table this, or ahead to table it?
Well, you could say on, as recommended by the city planner, we're gonna hold on to, I think this.
Yeah, why not? Prefer, you, I mean, I don't want this agenda item to rule on forever.
Right, um.
Cause it's really not appropriate.
Would you like to formally withdraw it from us?
Uh, I don't know if I can do that, but, um, you could say that your recommendation is that it doesn't go to council immediately, that it be thought a bit more, and then I'll deal with it with the council and it's, I don't think it's a big deal.
You could remand it back to the planning director.
Oh, what a good idea.
Mr. Chairman.
I like.
With regard to the proposed amendment.
No, this is, it's, the process is working, this is, this is a good thing.
To the City Ellsworth Ordinance's official land use map, this proposal to consider rezoning of the land on the east side of Route one seventy-two, the Surrey Road, we recommend that we 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 remand this item back to the city planner for further construction and review.
I second it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussions? All in favor? We hand it back to.
So do you want to adjourn after the signing of my laws so that, um, they can go home?
Yeah, who you wanna do your usual.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting after we assign the my laws.
Second?
Seconds.
All in favor? Okay. Let's sign those rules.